There's an escalating battle of wills between Governor Yonkin and school districts refusing to comply with the policies putting parents back in the driver's seat when it comes to how transgender issues are handled at school. We'll discuss the latest twists and turns in that faceoff. Plus, a mother of three loses her job after speaking at a school board meeting, but instead of shutting up, she's speaking up even more. Welcome to Speak Up, Virginia, equipping you to speak up on the life, family, and freedom issues that matter most to you. From the Family Foundation, I'm your host Candy Cushman with our president, Victoria Cobb. Well, before we get started today, I have a fun topic I want to talk about. Well, I think it's fun. I read this article in the Washington Post that I really enjoyed, and it was about kind of the history of pizza in America and how people kind of like different types of pizza depending on what kind of region you're in. And I thought this was super interesting. I will just kind of boil it down to the three categories I got from the article. Not that they put it this way, but I kind of got you're one of these three types, either New York, thin crust, Chicago deep dish, or more kind of California cosmopolitan. That's what I learned from this article.
And California cosmopolitan is lots of stuff on top, or is it something about the crust?
A little more thin. To me, it's like a little more thin. It's got the little mushrooms.
I envisioned veggies because you said California, but I don't know if that's what you meant.
You know, it'd be what people drink out in California with wine while they sit in the sunset.
Yeah, there you go. All right. So you're deep.
Okay. Yeah. So here's the background of my life on this. And this gets into a marital divide on this topic. So when we were engaged and when I first hung out with my husband's family, he's a northerner. He's from the Northeast. They told me when I went to visit them, okay, we're going to take you to this pizza place. And it's like this, the greatest place ever. You're gonna love it. So I go in there full of anticipation and it's this thin crust thing. And I'm just looking at this going, where is my dough? I mean, where's my thick juicy pizza? Because I'm from Texas, you know, and I, you know, we do the thick dough crust. Yeah, that was a culture shock. And we still don't agree over this pizza style.
Well, I'm actually entertained more about the marital disagreement over this because Matt and I, you know, was North and South when we met and everything was different, including white plates, colored lights for Christmas foods. Everything was different except the pizza. I don't think we had a dispute over pizza, which is actually, I guess I took for granted the things that weren't different. But yeah, it's thin crust all the way. Now, I did grow up in the Philadelphia suburbs. So of course, New York style pizza is a given. But it has to be the kind that it's thin and like the cheese is sliding off almost because it's just so greasy and it's, you know, it's not about the dough. It's really about the experience of having to fold it to like get it into your mouth. It's all of that.
See, I can't stand all that grease. When I get that grease.
It's probably not good for you.
I actually take a nap again and pat it down.
Okay, we eat cheese steaks also from Philadelphia, though. So imagine that. I mean, yeah.
But Matt, a Southern guy, he likes the thin crust.
He doesn't have a problem with it. Now, in our house, we have four kids now. So what's interesting is each kid has a different favorite pizza place. So we actually rotate the pizza, but we rotate it between like some of the bad chains that they like. Like, you know, we have a Little Caesar's and a Papa John's. And I'm like, oh, that stuff is all just terrible to me.
I would agree with that.
Yeah. So we rotate. But you eat a lot of pizza when you have kids. Like, it's just, I didn't used to, but it became like a thing. So.
All right. Well, I want to hear from the gallery back here. Jesse, I can guess what you are.
So yeah, I grew up in the Northeast as well, in New York. So obviously, I'm a thin crust person, but I've got some friends in the movement all over the country. And we often disagree on this point and have had very fiery arguments. Thankfully, though, my husband, also from the South, grew up in Florida. So he's a thin crester as well. But in Virginia, I've noticed that the real divide is do pineapples belong on pizza?
Yes, they do. They 100% do. Apparently, we don't agree on that either. All right, Catherine, Michigan. Let's get some Michigan commentary on pizza.
Well, despite growing up near Chicago, I've never had a deep dish.
I just can't believe you have never even had that.
And now that I also, like, growing up, I didn't know that I had a gluten allergy. But now that I have that, I have yet to find a gluten-free deep dish in the regions that I live, or even in like the freezer section or anything. So by default, I am a thinner crust type person.
I will say, I have to tell you, I never thought I'd eat a pizza that they made at a cauliflower crust because I thought that's the most ridiculous thing ever unless you have to. And I would never have to. But I am eating a little bit better these days. And I actually went to a restaurant and tried a cauliflower pizza crust. And it was phenomenal. And I would do it again. Now, I think that's not true of every cauliflower. I think that is be selective, right?
They can be very good, but yeah, they can be very good.
But then you'd have no dough. You'd have no dough.
I had one that I thought was good.
Was it like at a restaurant? Or did you actually buy one?
Actually, I bought it to be healthy.
Wow.
And it wasn't as bad as I thought.
Well, there we go. See, the dough is really not where we're all supposed to be centering our eating habits, but it is good.
I will say, I'm a little offended that Jesse, before this show began, called my deep dish pizza a casserole.
Deep dish is a casserole. It's okay. It's a good casserole, but it's a casserole, not a pizza.
I did, I will say, of course, when you go to Chicago, you do have to. So I did, when I was in Chicago, go and have an official deep dish. And it's so thick, I feel like you have to cut it. Like, I felt like I had to use a fork and knife because things were gonna, like, it was just too thick.
It's so wonderful.
Yeah, I don't know. If you have to eat it with a fork and knife, that just doesn't seem right. Anyway.
All right. Well, diving into today's more serious topics, we mentioned this ongoing battle, really nationwide, over parental rights and how schools are handling these transgender issues that are being pushed to schools today. And Virginia really has become ground zero in all of this. And, you know, as in a lot of cases, a lot of eyes are on Virginia and how we are going to handle this, what's going to happen in our state. And it's interesting to watch how schools are navigating the decision of whether or not they are going to adopt Governor Yonkin's recent revisions, making these policies on transgender issues in schools more parent-friendly. And so there's been a lot of twists and turns just over the last couple of weeks. And Victoria, I'd love for you to bring us up to speed on this.
Yeah. I mean, we have some counties like Roanoke County and Spotsylvania that have done great things. They have gone ahead and wholly adopted these guidelines. And they've been courageous in the face of, you know, in every school board, there's folks on both sides. And so they've done a great job. And of course, you'll remember, we talked about the Roanoke County one in our podcast because you had the Biden administration coming in trying to force themselves into the middle of it because they were having, I think it was community tenseness or whatever.
There was a protester.
Right. There was a protester. And then the federal government was going to say, we're going to come to your rescue. And I think there's been an update on that, that Roanoke has basically said, thanks, but no, thanks. We're not interested in your government.
Yeah, this is pretty awesome. The school board chairman, Brent Hudson, made it clear that they did in fact determine that Biden's so-called Community Relations Agents, Community Relations Service agents or something, that that was not going to be in the best interest of the community. So that's good. But on the other hand, we have other school boards doing the polar opposite of this. Instead of listening to parents, they are completely ignoring them. They are rejecting these policies. I think Fairfax School District, surprise, surprise, was one of the first to lead out rejecting, publicly rejecting these parent-friendly revisions. But the Nova schools, I thought, seem to all be taking cues from one another because it's all kind of suspiciously the same. So you know how Prince William, Alexandria, Arlington, it looks like they're all rejecting these policies.
Yeah. But I think it's really interesting because the governor is making a pretty vocal fight about this, which I really love. You know, he's gotten in a pretty public battle, just kind of calling them out for not following the guidelines. So I think we should listen to what he has to say for a minute, just to kind of hear the debate.
Be back on the program. What do you say to those who are defying this Virginia legislation that passed and that you put into effect? Is there anything that you can do about it?
Well, let me just first begin with it's the law. And the law is very clear that I issue model policies and local school districts have to adopt policies consistent with the model policies. And I would add to the fact that this is common sense. We are very straightforwardly saying that first, parents are in charge of their children's lives. The kids don't belong to the state. They belong to parents and to families. And they have the ultimate say in decisions that that child is going to make with a parent, not with a bureaucrat. And finally, at the end of the day, this is the, these are the exact same school systems that fought us on allowing parents to decide whether children wear a mask, or whether sexually explicit materials could be removed from the curriculum, or that schools were going to stay shut for a long period of time.
So I really like that he commented that this is the law, right? Like, there's a law that says, and these are the model transgender guidelines. I like the fact that, you know, he basically said, local school districts have to adopt something. That's what the law says. They have to adopt something that is consistent with the guidelines. And, you know, that kids don't belong to the state. They belong to the parents. I think he's done such a good job generally messaging about, you know, he's doing these Parents Matter rallies right now and those kind of things. And of course, you know, who's not going to notice, you know, it's the same districts that fought us the first go around. You know, when we, you know, when Governor Northam had passed bad model guidelines, it was these guys that went guns blazing and made the worst possible policies known to man. And so of course, we would expect that they're the ones, again, battling. And they were also the ones that were terrible on COVID and terrible on all sorts of other things.
Yeah. Explicit content, parents bringing up all that.
All of it. These are the target school boards where parents know, if you're going to live here, you are going to have a battle on your hands.
Well, here's the interesting thing. Shortly after that, after Governor Yonkin made those strong statements, then we get this news that Fairfax School District has recently put out another publication, an update to their quote, "Students' Rights and Responsibilities" document. And this appears to all be kind of an open conflict of the revised policies. For example, this document tells students that they have the right to something called non-disclosure of gender identity. Now, I'm going to assume that that gets into not telling your parents.
That's what I would read it as.
It also has the right to access restrooms and locker rooms that are different from their biological sex. And then there's a section, there's this whole section on discriminatory harassment, but it includes things like, quote, "dead naming and misgendering."
Yeah, these terms make me crazy because this is absurd. I mean, dead naming, this is what the child was named. And in this county, it might be what their parents still call them because they're telling their kid not to tell their parent that they're out at school. So the whole school is supposed to pretend with this new name that they're using, and the parents are probably still, quote, "dead naming" at home. This is absurd.
When you think about it, it's kind of creepy to call it dead naming.
It's villainizing. Yes, they're villainizing.
That they're dead. That's just, yeah.
Yeah, no one died.
Yeah.
And no one died. And that's what we wonder where hopelessness comes from. Anyway, that's a whole side of spiritual conversation. But it's just really disturbing. And misgendering is to identify somebody that actually is biologically this sex and to, you know, I mean, I just, the idea, everybody has to participate in what we know is not the case. And that is, and they're being very clear, and it's very compelled and very forced. And I think that's really concerning. And also, you got to remember, Fairfax, in particular, their policies call for punishment. And if you remember, their punishment is as severe as a five-day suspension for so-called malicious misgendering, right? I don't know how, again, there was always this, what is malicious misgendering?
Yeah.
Because you got to get to the intent, right? That's always getting into what's in someone's heart, the malicious part. So that's always a little concerning. So yeah.
And the whole misgendering thing is specifically, I think, about the pronouns.
Right.
So that gets into a real issue if you're forcing people to say a pronoun in reference to someone, you know, that it's different than that person's biological sex. And that's where you get into these teachers, Tanner Cross.
Right.
That have tried to not do it.
Peter Vlaming, that lost his job over not using pronouns? I mean, this is all the same state.
All right. Well, on top of all that, some listeners may also recall this controversy that happened last year over a mandatory training for teachers in Fairfax County that basically said parental permission is not required for any of these things if kids decide they want to start experimenting with their gender at school or school officials know about it. I'm just going to give an example. This was reported by the Washington Examiner. We're going to put an image up on the screen for our YouTube viewers. But basically, this is a slide from this training that asks a multiple choice question, quote, "Parent permission is required for which of the following?" question mark. Then it lists these scenarios, including a student requesting to use a different name at school, or use a locker room that the way they put it corresponds with their gender identity. And of course, the answer is none of the above. Parental permission is required for none of the above.
You know, it is really disturbing that this is where we've gotten. And just, I mean, it's clear that Fairfax's policy is a flagrant violation. It's completely opposite of what these model guidelines are. And you, I mean, if you're wondering kind of how they're justifying this, what they're saying is, you know, basically that Yonkin's guidelines violate, they're kind of implying that they somehow violate these higher order laws. And they reference, of course, the Virginia Human Rights Act, Title IX, and equal protection, and kind of say, well, he, you know, his don't fit into this. So that's what they're saying. And they're just insinuating that it's somehow legally off base.
And they're throwing federal laws into that mix to try to appeal to a higher order, as you put it.
Right, right.
Well, here's the good news. You know, Governor Yonkin's administration, Governor Yonkin himself, has really been pretty bold on this. So he asked his Attorney General, Jason Mieres, to develop an official opinion about this, whether these policies are in violation of federal laws, Virginia Human Rights Act. And Attorney General Jason Mieres did do that. He has now put out an official opinion. And we aren't going to go into the whole thing because it's several pages long.
Please.
Yeah. The main thing you need to know is that it makes clear in a very thoroughly documented way that these policies are not in violation of these laws. And also, I thought this was interesting. It also makes clear that these school districts cannot be in open conflict with the revised policies that are now the guidance for the state of Virginia coming out of the Education Department.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's really great. It's a really powerful tool for parents because they don't just have to say it. Now they have the Attorney General saying it. And so they can, they can share that with their school board members. And I also, you know, on our website, we put a lot of these kind of tools right there at our Protect Every Kid website where there's, you know, we can, you know, you can use the AG letter. We also have a letter from our Founding Freedoms Law Center. And there's just all sorts of talking points and things. But there's a lot of tools that these parents can use to say, no, you can't go against these guidelines because they are in fact, you know, issued by the governor. And what I think is most relevant is, you know, when Fairfax and all these other counties, when we, when we had bad guidelines and we said, hey, you as a locality, get to make your own decision. The reason we did is because the old guidelines violated a parent's fundamental right to direct the upbringing of their child. That's a law in Virginia code. And the old guidelines.
That is liar.
That is, yes. And that, the old guidelines 100% violated that. But these guys were fine with conflicting with that part of the code. But now, we got to appeal to Title IX, or the Human Rights Act, or whatever it is. So everybody's picking and choosing. And, you know, I think a parent's right is pretty emphatic. And the courts have upheld that over and over and over again.
That is an excellent point. And I just want to reiterate, the reason having these legal documents at your fingertips as parents concerns citizens is powerful because you don't have to be the legal expert and explain and kind of counter all these arguments. The knowledge is there. So we have compiled all that at familyfoundation.org/protecteverykid. Again, just scroll to the bottom, look for the downloadable tools, look for the legal guidance. And not only are you going to see the Attorney General's opinion, but also our Founding Freedoms Law Center put together something on this whole Grimm's case.
Yeah. I mean, that's the biggest objection people hear from their school board is, oh, there's this U.S. Supreme Court case on Gavin Grimm and that. And I think our law center did a great job just saying, here's the distinctions. Here's why this is not exactly like the Gavin Grimm situation. And here's, and so I think being able to kind of provide your school board some counter to that because that's what a lot of folks are going to hear.
Yeah. It's almost like that Grimm case is always brought out as kind of the big hammer.
It's like the big weapon.
Yeah, the big weapon. But the truth is, unless you have very specific facts aligned with that, that isn't a just sweeping thing that you have.
Right. I think they want to use it for a whole lot more than the actual case was about, especially when you get to the parent deception part. That case was not about parent deception. That case was, you know, very narrow on what the findings really related to. So yeah.
Exactly. All right. Well, I just want to address one thing that I think needs to be said or discussed because I keep hearing people talking about kind of skeptically, well, this whole parental rights movement, it's all political. You know, Governor Yonkin knows that this is a winning issue politically. And it's almost as if they're just sweeping that aside, that it's just kind of a superficial movement. It's kind of fake. It's not legit or something like that. But I just wanted to address the fact, you know, I think Governor Yonkin does genuinely care about these parental rights issues. But even if that wasn't the case, and he did see that as a winning issue politically, which it is, I don't think that's a negative thing.
Every once in a while, the right thing and the popular thing align. It does not always happen in our culture. But this is actually an example where it happens to both be the correct thing to do and people are going to support you for doing the right thing.
Yeah. And the whole point of us being in this system that our founding fathers gave us, a constitutional system, is that we have a right and responsibility to vote. And the whole point of that is that elected officials know what matters to us.
Absolutely. And I mean, the opposite could be the case. I mean, I think we only have to look at California where they've got this whole situation where the government is actually attacking a local school board for suing, and suing the school board for trying to stand up for parental rights. So it could be an entirely different situation. You know, California's Attorney General, Rob Banta, announced a lawsuit against Southern California School District, one of these lower California school districts, the Chino Valley Unified School District, because it dared to respect parental rights by requiring educators to just notify them if their child is going down the path of gender transitioning. So it was just a notification thing. And all their policy requires is to tell parents, for example, if your kid wants to use a different pronoun, or use a different bathroom, or a different name, or whatever it might be, they're just going to notify. But for that, the government is actually coming at them.
Yeah. Did you notice that Attorney General Banta called this a forced outing policy? I think that was the headline of his press release. He said, quote, "Wrongfully, it wrongfully endangers the physical, mental, and emotional well-being of non-conforming students who lack an accepting environment in the classroom and at home." Now, we've kind of heard this whole forced outing argument before, haven't we?
That was a huge, huge term that they used, especially when we were talking about Sage's Law, which we've talked about on this show before. But it was, you know, it was from a legislator who really wants all non-affirming parents treated like child abusers. You know, that's their concept. That person has made it crystal clear. And so they use this term "forced outing" just for notifying parents. Meanwhile, the child is out at school. The whole school knows.
To everybody else.
They're out, but not apparently at home. And then that would be a forced outing. So, you know, this is one of those things. And if we, I mean, if we continue to head in that same direction as we did under Governor Northam, we're going to see our, you know, our DOJ is going to get weaponized against parents. I mean, we know the federal government is run by somebody who believes this. And so it's really good that we have a state government. Our governor is at least pushing back on all of that.
And that's where it kind of gets back to what I was saying about, it's a redemptive thing if we vote and they know that parents matter because we see what it looks like if they're not getting that message. And if we would have continued that way, I'm sorry, under Governor Northam's administration.
Yeah.
I think we could be California right now with them going after parent-friendly policies in local school districts, local communities.
I think 100%. And of course, I know a lot of people are also wondering, okay, if the Attorney General, if they can come after the school boards for doing the right thing in California, can we go after the school boards?
Wrong thing.
Well, the, yeah, well.
The school board's the right thing. I'm sorry.
The school boards are the right thing. And then, you know, they're coming after them in the wrong way. But I think people are wondering, okay, so can our Attorney General, I mean, that's the natural question is like, you know, at this exact end, I can't say literally what the fact set would have to be to allow the Attorney General to have authority. But of course, we do hope they'll be aggressive, you know, that if there are opportunities to stand up against these Fairfax and Arlington and Alexandria and Prince William and those Northern Virginia schools, you know, to fight for parents, I hope our AG can take advantage of those.
So if they can, if they can go after local school districts, that way, can our Attorney General hold them accountable here on behalf of parental rights?
We can go wait and see because I think there's interest.
I mean, I was encouraged because right before we recorded this, I saw a statement from the Attorney General talking to reporters, that our Attorney General, Jason Mieres, that he was saying, hey, if your school board votes to reject these, you can sue as a parent on behalf of parental rights. And they said they would look at it case by case and see if it was appropriate for.
Yeah, whether they can step in. Yeah.
So it looks like they're willing to do that.
It's a good start. At least the words and intent are there.
Well, as we continue to see this battle play out in school district, after-school district in Virginia, I just want to again, remind people some online resources that will be helpful to you. Because I think the important thing to keep in mind here is, too many school boards are hearing this and really embracing this one-sided narrative that this whole forced outing, that, you know, we're going to have, they're listening to this argument that if you got to cut the parents out, because if you bring the parents in, it's going to harm students, they're going to commit suicide. And it's really not a data-based argument. Actually, the opposite is true. You prevent more suicides when you have parents involved. But that story needs to be shared. We need to expose the other side of this story, the real harm that results when you cut parents out of the process, when parents are no longer allowed to be that protective shield in their child's life. Like, we need to give school boards tools to hear that point of view.
Yeah. And I just think we should mention, you know, on the website, we talked about some of the, you know, the legal advice and all that. But there's also stories, you know. I think there's also access to things about, you know, we had Michelle Blair talk about Sage's story. We've talked about that on this podcast a bunch. And we brought.
And then let's just, real quick, I mean, so Sage, the school hid from Michelle that her daughter, I think around 15 years old, was experimenting with her gender. And long story short, she ended up in the hands of sex traffickers because Michelle was cut out of the process.
Exactly. An example of real harm when a parent is not knowledgeable. So there's all sorts of stuff about that on there. We also brought in Chloe Cole. I mean, we had her on this podcast. There's a lot of resources there around her story. This is a young girl that transitioned at a very young age, including surgery and the whole nine yards. And now, at just 18, 19 years old, she already has just tremendous regret and is trying to help other people not find themselves there. So these are powerful things. And we brought, you know, we brought her out to Virginia Beach to try to have that big battle out there. You know, and again, you know, that was a, you know, a five-five, one abstention scenario. So these things are really close in communities.
They are still wrangling in Virginia Beach and many other communities.
We got to hold them accountable. We got to just stay on it. Keep raising our voices until we get folks to listen to the parents.
Yeah. And so Chloe Cole has a great video on the website at familyfoundation.org/protecteverykid. She filmed a three-minute video that is great to share with your school board members. It's very powerful. Well, it's that time again. Time for our Inconceivable Moments Award. This is where we're featuring examples of the absolute lunacy and craziness that happens when cultural leaders try to give guidance completely apart from biblical principles. And we're calling this the Liberal's Most Inconceivable Moments Award.
Inconceivable!
Well, since we're on the topic of school board battles and California, I do want to bring up for this week's inconceivable, this courageous mother of three in Benicia, California, who spoke at her local school board meeting and afterward lost her job.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's really important to highlight these stories because it's part of this trend that just keeps happening. And it's escalating where we see people on the left trying to create a fear that if you speak up, you're going to lose your job, right? They're doing this to people. And then they're using these stories to try to get citizens to, you know, back off and quiet down. And, you know, I mean, we're going to cancel you from your job. We're going to, you know, take your bank account, all these, all these cancellation issues.
Yeah, that is the goal. Target these people, make an example of them. And eventually, people start self-censoring, as you and I know, because we talk to people who tell us, I can't speak up at my school board. I'm going to, you know, I'll lose my job. I mean, we hear that.
Yeah, absolutely.
But that's why it's so important that this mom did not allow these intimidation tactics to shut her up. Instead, she just started speaking out more, which I love. Will you tell us a little bit of this story?
Yeah. So let's go back and just kind of explain it. Basically, she, it just started in the spring. Her name is Janet Roberson. And she's a mother with three kids, as you said, in public schools. And she basically just gave comment at her local, it's at Benicia School Board meeting. And she just expressed concern, basic mom thing, expressed concern about a new sex ed curriculum that was going for 10 and 12-year-olds.
Yeah. Well, we're going to play a portion of her comments. But as you are listening to her comments, just keep in mind, as you're listening, that for these comments, maybe a two- to three-minute speech, a testimony, she was made the target of a public shaming campaign for this little three-minute comment. There was a letter to the editor after she spoke that repeatedly identified where she worked over and over again, and referred to her with many different slurs, including a self-loathing bigot, or equating her to a self-loathing bigot. So keep that in mind as you listen to this.
But I would like to say to you who are entrusted to represent and make decisions for our children, and to the community that may be watching this video, that we have a big concern with what is now being taught to children as young as 10 in Benicia, such as, children are being asked to identify their pronouns, and this is now part of the 10-year-old curriculum. This forces a gender discussion beyond the scope of the state requirements and complicates an already overburdened classroom environment. We are alarmed that gender identity is now being discussed in math classes. This takes time from core learning and does not benefit the students or our community. Teaching kids that there isn't any standard or truth, and that you can believe anything you want to believe is not scientifically accurate or medically correct. For example, the notion that a girl can decide to be a boy, or a boy can decide to be a girl, is not true and should not be taught. The new curriculum teaches that individuals can decide if they're male or female regardless of anatomy, does not explain that a boy cannot menstruate and a girl cannot impregnate someone. This is not scientific or medically accurate. Our 10-year-olds will now be taught that they can receive puberty blockers to prevent their body from going through changes that make them uncomfortable. All humans are uncomfortable during adolescence. To teach vulnerable children that a lifetime of dependence on medical care is a viable option is completely unacceptable and evil, frankly. The new curriculum encourages gender confusion, not gender clarification.
Well, what did you think? Does she sound like a self-loathing bigot to you?
I feel like it's pretty darn reasonable to bring up the fact that transgenderism is creeping into math. I mean, that, that seems like every mom could relate to this is absurd. And then, you know, but just days after she makes those comments, a left-wing blogger, who has apparently some connection to a local progressive political group, of course, you know, then writes this note to the real estate company that she's contracted with, Compass, I think was the name of the real estate company. And, you know, basically, among other things, the note asked how Compass enforces its DEI policies, like, your employees are stepping outside of what they should be allowed to say in other contexts, having nothing to do with their job.
And what are you going to do about it?
Yeah. What are you going to do about it? I mean, someone is openly hateful like this, is what they said, which is just disturbing. And so basically, the note gave a deadline this, is what they said, which is just disturbing. And so basically, the, the note gave a deadline of like 9:00 PM or 9:00 AM on, on May 1st for a response. So, so they wrote this note and they demanded a response from the employer, or the public post would be made, you know, would be made that, that they didn't get rid of this woman. Basically like, we're going to threaten the business if you don't handle this. And so it's pretty disturbing.
Yeah. And lo and behold, on May 1st, Janet says.
Guess what happens? Company folds.
She gets a call from her boss informing she's no longer a real estate agent with this company.
Shocking.
Yeah.
With such courage.
But they picked the wrong mom for this. And that's what I love about this story because this is a woman who apparently has lots of great marketing skills.
Clearly.
Through her real estate experience. So she knows how to do websites and videos. So she did a whole website on getting canceled.
That's awesome.
She did a video about it. And it got the attention of people like Elon Musk and libs of TikTok. So her story is out there. And we're going to put, for our YouTube viewers, we're going to put up an image of her website and also Elon Musk tweet, or, well, it's not tweet. I don't know what you call them anymore.
Whatever an X is.
An X.
An X. Jesse?
It's called a zit, I believe.
A zit?
Are you serious?
Well, at least we know.
That's what I've heard.
I'll still sound uncool because I'll routinely refer this as Twitter, tweet, but zit.
All right. Back on topic.
Yeah, sorry. We're, we're lost in Elon Musk's playing around with words.
So this story continues to play out. And I think you're the one giving this week's inconceivable award. So weigh it on us.
I guess that means this week, we're going to have to award the inconceivable award to the progressive bullies of Benicia who tried to, you know, they made this big effort